Director Shannon.
All right, so next up is discussing the adoption of policy GBG, staff participation in political activities and ensuring safe environments to learn policy. This is our second read. We had the first reading in our last meeting. And so now we are voting on whether or not to adopt the policy.
I would like to make a motion that we refer this to a superintendent standing committee of six staff members of various persuasions and two board members from either side of the faction.
A point of order, this same motion presented last meeting.
It's a different motion. It's a different motion. It's for six weeks, not for six months. And it's a specific targeted emotion. And it's different than the previous one that I vote that I raised last, the last two times. So I will say I'm moving for a superintendent standing committee of six faculty members who can be involved in this with two school board members, one from either side, and with a limited six, six week to determine what the problem is and find a solution by talking to students and parents and coming up with a, a solution for, for the, the, the discussion we've been having.
Well, second.
I feel that this is something that will all bring us out of the, the, the debate between this and that it will turn it over to the educators. And that we will show the educators, we have listened to them, we have heard them. We trust them to come up with something that is, is, is equitable and, and also meets every student's needs, which is something that we, we've heard again and again. We need to reach out and make every student safe. And, and by coming together as a faculty and as a board, we can regain trust and show trust and respect to, to all sides. And that it's, it's, it's not where you guys, where, where people will feel well, you're, you're, you're giving up on your principles. No, your principles are there. It will show that you're an empathetic and collaborative leader. And you can build a consensus through this action. And it gives us a chance to step aside from the turmoil that we've been through and through the, the incidents that have been happening to our students who are affected by what we've done.
I guess I would also say to that, just, yeah, I understand how you're saying that Rebecca. I think that we've also drawn this out. Some of the factors are in our control and some of them aren't that have happened this summer. We need to get moving back towards education on this. And I think that it's one of the things that the community is anxious for that. I know the students are. And with any type of policy like this, we can sit back, move forward and then get people back to the table. And once we've moved past this kind of vote, this type of motion, that we can put together people in a room and find out what truly the best moves forward. We've never done that, not my time on the board on a such a difficult issue. But we need to get moving back towards education right away. We've been derailed for quite a while. And so that's how I, why I don't agree with that. So, but I mean, I do agree with people talking. Staff are important, you know, parents are important. But it's time we, you know, tonight, get some type of closure, good or bad for some. And then as we move forward, we'll probably have to put extra time in. I'll lead it with you Rebecca. I'll come back and, and sit down with, with community members and staff members on a ad hoc committee. But, and I'll do it with you. But, you know, right now I feel like we've, we've tested the time limit on this to the, the point where you have to make a decision. So that's how I feel about that.
Dave, I totally disagree with you that this is going to get us back to education. I think the implementation of this policy is going to completely put people in their camps and the resistance is going to not quit. And the extremism that we saw over this weekend is not going to quit. And when we rush it and in the face of strong, strong community opposition, you are not going to be healing any bridges. The only possible way for this to come to any kind of consensus is to have those conversations prior to the adoption of this policy. The policy has several things wrong with it. And if we're going to go through it and look at it all, we can definitely, I'll have that discussion right now. The motion on the floor is regarding suspending it so that we can have a community group interacting with it. I think any work you do after that is going to fall on deaf ears. You're not going to get people interested in doing this and people are going to become more entrenched. I also think that's the point of this. I think the point of this is to show that you are trying to sow division with extremist views. You have no interest in listening to community. And I think quite frankly, you're fearful of getting a group together to discuss this because overwhelmingly, our community has shown us that they do not support these extremist actions. I think you trying to hide it behind education is ridiculous. This has never been about education and nor will it help us focus on education.
Well, I'm gonna try to be polite here. That's absolutely false. We have, it's not overwhelmingly for this. We have a very divided community. We've been divided for about 16 months now. And we know at that timeframe what happened. We're divided. Our country's divided, our community's divided and, and it can stop. It can stop right now. If, if you, me and the people in this community will just stop all the things that they've been doing. Stop the hate speech, stop the talk, stop the, the going after people, their personal lives, their friends. This is all got to stop. And if we stop it, then the people in this community can sit back and say, okay, take a big step back and we can move forward. Everybody needs to take a big pause here.
The only way to stop this is going to be not jamming it through, which is what I think will probably happen tonight. So I just want you to have clear expectations of knowing if this passes this evening under these current situations, it's not going to come to a peaceful conclusion where everybody just forgets and moves on and goes into education. That's what I'm trying to tell you. The time to stop it and come to consensus is now. It's not after the adoption of the policy.
And, and how else, how else can we build, how else can we build trust? If we don't willingly say, okay, we're going to take a breath here and, and let the educators and two board members work this out, really hammer it out. I, I, I've been on the policy committee for three years and this, this policy did not get proper vetting through it. I, and, and I think that we could, we could actually show our students, we're willing to educate ourselves on them, on their needs and on all students' needs and show that we respect our staff and our teachers and our superintendent and that we can respect the differences that everyone has and find ways to come together to make a difference for our students that are affected through this divisive action.
If I may add, when you say this will stop, how I take it from my lived experience, this was a direct attack on people's existence and existing is resisting. So if by saying it'll stop, I'm not going to stop existing, which means I'm going to continue resisting. And so are these students and so are, is everybody in the community. So for me, this isn't going to stop.
It would stop if we really did truly care about the kids. If we stop thinking about adult agendas, it will stop if we stop. At least to take a pause from, from how people have been acting in our community. It'll stop if we lead that by example on this board and stop doing that. It can, that doesn't mean there can't be a discussion down the road. That doesn't mean there can't be talks about that.
Dave, I agree with you 100% and that stopping is right now. This is where it can stop. And that's a choice this board has to make.
You're right.
So I oppose the motion. I think we've spent way more oxygen on this issue than, than we should have already. I don't want to spend five, six more minutes on this issue, let alone six more weeks. And this policy is so innocuous. It, it just says that teachers can't display political symbols at work while they're on school time. That is, that is not, that should not be controversial. And so I oppose this motion and we should pass this very mild policy here tonight.
That's, that's a ridiculous attempt at trying to pretend that this is nothing. And maybe it is nothing to you as a white privileged male, but it's a really big deal to a lot of our community and a lot of our staff and a lot of our students. And there is no reason to hurry with this. And the only reason I'm suspicious of why you would choose to hurry up and finish this is because you're moving on to other things. And it has nothing to do with centering student voice, nothing to do with centering staff experience, everything to do with your own political adult agenda, just like Dave said.
There's nothing to do with a political agenda, nothing, zero, completely. It's our viewpoint that this is healthy for our schools. People in this community feel the way you feel and there's other people that feel like this is a bad policy. We didn't even have flags in our schools a few years ago, except.
Mr. Chair, I would say that we're getting into the, the discussion of the policy itself. And I think we should call the vote on the motion to.
I, I would like to hear from Renee and Trevor what they feel.
That's out of order.
I'm sorry. Allowing the space for every board member to have the comments that they would like to make is absolutely within order.
That is not what she did. She called out two board members to.
Okay, well. Okay, could we please have all, a, a comment from all board members on, on this?
That's out of order. You don't have the power to request that. If they want to say something, they have the ability to speak. They're adults. They can talk if they want to talk.
As elected voting officials of this board, we do have a fundamental right to tell our, and responsibility to tell our constituents why we vote how we vote. And there has been a lot of voting without any explanation. I am also, as a voting member of this board, interested to know how and why my other four members are leaning and voting. That is totally appropriate to the business of this meeting.
Well, with that said, we are, we're doing real well here together. I will say that, you know, if any other director has something to say right now, I'd like to hear it and then we'll move into the vote.
Yeah, I'll take a few minutes to, to say a few things. You know, sometimes we do things and in hindsight, you know, hindsight's 2020, right? I, I can only speculate is if the existing policy that we're voting on tonight had been written initially, if we would be having all the upheaval in the community. I do agree. I do agree with Director Shannon. I think that this is pretty innocuous. This only codifies what's, you know, what's in the law, what the, the recommendations that we've gotten from our legal counsel. Like Director Brown said, this, you know, when, when you think back just a few years, we didn't have these signs. And so who is the arbiter of what's, what signs and symbols get on our school and, and which ones don't? You know, I've heard stories of, of kids with, you know, thin blue line flags up in their, in their Zoom camera and they were told to take it down. You know, I don't know what tomorrow brings, but I do know and I do feel that school is no place for, you know, public employees pushing any particular ideological view. We're, we're here to teach a curriculum. We hopefully can get to that and, and work on bettering our academic achievement. Hopefully as a team, but I guess that's my, my thoughts on it. You know, if, if I had turned back the clock, this was the, the policy that would, would have been written. It's, it's all political signs, quasi-political signs and symbols, right? What, what tomorrow brings, I have no idea, but I, I know that the next controversy in a divided nation, whatever that symbol may be, we don't want it in the schools. We should be teaching our kids how to think. We should, I mean, you know, I thought a lot about this. We've, you know, I know that there's been a lot of animosity and stuff that's happened out in the community. There is great support for and against us. It tells me that we're divided on it. But I try to look at the, the positive sides on things and we've lowered the water level and it's really highlighted a lot of the issues. Over and over again, I hear that our schools aren't safe. That's really what I want to focus on in the future. I want to understand to what degree are our schools not safe and, and what are the causes that are, are not making it safe? We need to address those things. If they're a real issue, we need to address them. And that's what I'm hearing over and over again from the community. Bullies should not be tolerated at all, right? But those hopefully are isolated incidents and you address those as they come up. You don't cancel people. You try to redirect them, guide them and help them understand the error of their ways and bring them back into the fold. But what we have done as a community and, and isolated incidents is we want to cancel people. And, and that's really a shame. I mean, I've, I've actually reached out to our, to our officer to check on the student in question that was involved in the, the heinous activity online. You know, I'd heard that he was suicidal. I don't know if any of the rest of you reached out to officer, who's our officer?
Morlan.
For us to know what the repercussions are, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about the repercussions.
About students on this meeting.
Well, my point is, is that where our hearts are at should be for our students. And I don't hear anybody talking about bringing people back in the fold. We just want to cancel them. And to me, that that's a shame. But getting back to my point, getting back to my point, we're divided, we're divided community, you know? This, this really just codifies what law is, what policies are, are in different places. And I, I fully support it, the, the way it reads. I don't think we should have ever called out any one side. This is any signs now and in the future, right? And we're talking about public employees, right? There's legal precedents based on our legal counsel for doing this. The, the courts have upheld, upheld this stuff in other areas of the nation. So.
Which is how systemic racism exists.
Well, I guess, I guess we'll have to disagree on that, Director Pena, because I don't believe that there's systemic racism. If what you mean by systemic racism is it's everywhere, that's how I view that. And I don't see it. And as much as I've been called a racist because of the activities of being a board member over the past two months, I still don't believe that. And anybody that knows me know that knows that I'm not racist or homophobic, so.
Trevor, can I ask you one just quick question?
Sure.
So if, if I, I agree with you that we need to be bringing people into the fold, we need to be coming to consensus. We need to have, be having discussions around trying to better understand everybody, which is exactly what Rebecca is trying to do. So I'm confused about why you opposed this motion when that is what she has motioned to do.
Okay, I'm going to stop it there. We've, we've, we've had this discussion. It's not a time to, to answer questions from other board members. We've allowed everybody to speak on this. Director Powell, do you have anything to add to that before we go to the vote?
Yeah, I just, I just, I hate, you know, what this is doing to our community and to our students and staff. And I really would like us to, to come together and find strategies that would encourage teachers, administrators and students to stand up to bullies. And even reminding those kids that are being the bullies of their own value and responsibilities to their fellow students. If we keep, keep on biting and devouring each other, watch out or you will be destroyed by each other. Love your neighbor as yourself. And that's in Galatians. And we are, we're just destroying each other. And I've sat with staff on both sides and listened to them. I've sat with students from both sides and parents from both sides and have listened to them. And it is, it's, it is just causing division. And there's, there's so many people that their students feel uncomfortable with the images and their students that don't. I mean, it's, and I just have a hard time. We were supposed to be here for all children and making all children feel safe and welcome. And by lifting up one group or several groups over another, that's not welcoming and safe for all children. I, I have a really hard time understanding that. I keep asking that question over and over again. It's like, okay, so you feel like these kids are being marginalized and bullied, but that's not fair to the other kids on the other side. They're being marginalized and bullied too, whether you want to see it or not. They are, because I've heard it. They're, they're being marginalized and bullied so much that they can't even get on and speak because they're too afraid. And, you know, I have letters and stuff that have come in. I mean, you guys have read them yourself, the emails that have come in. I've read each one of them. I print, I print them out on both sides and study them and do the research. And it's like, and then I've gone on Sunday, I was sat for almost five hours talking to a teacher and listening to her, her stories on how she's not being heard and how this makes her extremely uncomfortable and how she, how it's affecting her students. So I'm hearing this firsthand from people. I'm not just sitting back and thinking of my own viewpoint or whatever. I'm trying to make it. That's what we're here for is to be there for all students, every single one of them. You know, and, and I feel that this is the best solution for that.
Well, I, I would like to just say one more thing is that if, if we could show our students and our staff that we could come together be with, with a standing committee, that we listen to both sides, all sides and come together and make a, make something that, that is from that discussion rather than this policy that will, will be like a win for one side and a disappointment to the other side. Wouldn't it be better to, to make, make the, the effort beforehand to, to bring us together, to really listen and work together? And what an educational experience that could be for our students? That shows that we can work out a, a solution that's fair for everyone rather than passing.
Sorry Rebecca.
Rather than passing a policy that, that will, will definitely be, be not accepted to, by, or not felt accepted by many people.
Okay, you guys, I'm going to bring us back. We're, we're way out of order here. So let everybody have their voice. Appreciate that. But we, we have motions on the, on the floor. So let's, let's get back to this. It's, Director Shannon, we are back. We have the discussion back to when you had the policy right there.
Mr. Chair, you need to, you need to call the vote on the motion to table.
I agree. Then we also, Pyros submitted her, her motion and it was seconded by Director Penner, so.
So it was Director Pena who seconded that.
Oh, sorry, my bad. I thought that was. Okay, so we need to vote on that one, I believe, first. Director Pyros, we got a motion and a second.
Hey Chair Brown?
Yes.
I think, does Tyler Smith have his hand up?
I didn't.
That was intentional.
I didn't actually know.
Chair Brown, I just wanted to point out, I think procedurally, she basically made a motion to refer this to a committee, which is different. So that's what I wanted to point out.
So we have that motion. We have that second. Correct?
Right.
Yep.
So we can vote on that one and we can move back to where Director Shannon was, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so those in favor of the, the motion that Director Pyros made about super tense committee with six staff and two school board members, please say yes by raising your hand. Okay, that is Directors Pyros, Penner and Pena got that. If you're opposed to that, please raise your hand. Directors Dehart, Shannon, Powell and Brown. Motion fails four to three. Three, four. All right, Director Shannon, you're back up.
All right. Yeah, so the policy language before us essentially has two parts. The first half is model policy language from the OSBA. And it, long and short, simply says that, you know, teachers may express their views in the course of exploring approved curriculum, but they are not to represent those views as to be the official viewpoint of the district. The second part is also fairly straightforward. It simply says that district employees will not use district facility space to hang up symbols of their own political or ideological viewpoints. And so that is, and I'm happy to read the whole thing for the folks following along at home. That might be helpful. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I will, I will read the proposed policy.
I think that would be good for the, the public there. Thank you.
Policy GBG staff participation in political activities. Employees may exercise their rights to participate fully in the affairs of public interests on a local, county, state and national level on the same basis as any community member in a comparable position in public or private employment and within the law. All district employees are privileged within the limitations imposed by state and federal laws and regulations to choose any side of a particular issue and to support their viewpoints as they desire by vote, discussion or persuading others. Such discussion persuasion however, will not be carried on during the performance of district duties except in open discussion during classroom lessons that consider various candidates for a particular office or various sides of a particular political or civil issue. On all controversial issues, employees must designate that the viewpoints they represent on the issues are personal and are not to be interpreted as the district's official viewpoint. No employee will use district facilities, equipment or supplies in connection with his or her political activities, nor will he, she use any time during the workday for such political activities. Ensuring safe environments to learn. No district employee shall, while acting within the scope of their employment, either during school hours or inside their physical area of responsibility at a school, such as a classroom, meeting room, desk area, hang, post, erect or otherwise display hereafter display any posters, signs, flags, banners, pictures or other digital or physical image that depicts support or opposing relating to a political, quasi-political or controversial topic. For the purposes of this policy, a controversial topic shall be defined as one that a professional educator could reasonably understand to have students on more than one side of said issue. For purposes of this policy, a political or quasi-political topic includes contemporary issues being debated in the local, state or national political climate. Any person concerned with a particular display should first notify the district employee believed to be responsible for the display. Alternatively, the concerned person may file a complaint with a supervisor, school principal or principals designee pursuant to district policy. Notes and exceptions. This policy does not restrict in any way students First Amendment rights nor change policy IB or IGAC. This policy does not restrict in any way district employees First Amendment rights when not speaking in their official capacity nor while not on the job or if they are not, not using a forum provided exclusively to them as an employee or otherwise speaking on behalf of the district. This policy does not limit nor apply to communications nor the free exchange of ideas during the course of approved educational events or exploration, exploration of approved curriculum. or exploration, exploration of approved curriculum. Official district billboards in school offices and union materials covered by collective bargaining agreements and are expressly exempt from this policy. The flags of the United States and the state of Oregon are not prohibited by this policy. So that's all the policy says. It's very straightforward. Uh, and to my mind, it should be non-controversial. We don't pay our teachers to, to push their political views on our students. That is not their place. Their place is to teach the approved curriculum. And that is all this policy does is ensure that that is happening in our schools.
What, okay, Brian, what about people who um, have pictures of their, their same-sex couple? That's a digital photo. Is that going to be controversy, controversial? And will they not be allowed to have a picture of their family with their same-sex couple?
No, I don't see how pictures of someone's family at their desk could be uh, interpreted as that. If it were blown up and, you know, put on an entire side of the classroom, then perhaps you could make some argument about that. But
What if somebody?
Photo would not qualify under this policy.
What if somebody doesn't like approve of personally gay marriage and they think it's wrong? Then it's awful, so they find that controversial. Now what?
Again, a personal photo at a desk would not qualify as a statement of politics.
Okay, so being gay is not political, but being proud of being gay is political. Is that where the line is?
That's not what I said.
No, I know, I'm just trying to understand how
You are.
Yes, I am, Brian, I'm trying to understand how a same-sex couple can have a photo. But to have a flag, that's crossing a line that is determined by someone, we have no idea. We know that legally this policy is a wreck when it comes to any kind of actual putting it into practice. And we know that it's not about students. We know it's not about staff. We know it's about outsized extremism, political agendas. So this entire document is riddled with grammatical errors. It's not even a professional document, let alone a policy that is supposed to govern and employ your 500 people. It's going to continue to intensify this divide in our community. And that's the point. You're, I, and clearly after the last vote, you four are not at all interested in bringing this community together. And I have no idea how much we really need to discuss this. It's going to be now our community, our staff and our students who are left to fight this. I'm ready to vote.
I, I find it telling that you don't have any amendments to the policy.
There are so many amendments to this policy. We could go through it. This is what the, this is what the policy committee is supposed to do. If you like, I'll start in the first paragraph and I didn't even get to all of the grammatical errors. If you put this into any kind of grammarly even app, you'll see it light up like a firework there. It is a mess. So we can sit here and do that if you'd like. I could tell you what the tip of the iceberg is. None of it's going to matter because you four have already clearly made your choice. This is not a functioning business meeting. This is an after-party of four members. So I say, let's just vote, get it over with.
I have questions about what is con- controversy that, what about uh, you said only the, the American flag and the state of Oregon flag? What about a, a, a PPOW flag? What about a, a military flag that someone has from this time in the service?
Policy, it does not say only the American flag and Oregon state flag. It expressly says that they are not covered by this policy. But it does not say they are the only things that could be hunted.
So if a pacifist walks in and sees that there's all branches of the military represented during a military fair and they find that offensive and controversial, what do they do?
If they feel the policy is being violated, they can file a complaint under this policy and it will be considered.
Okay, so who's considering all these policies? Because I have a feeling our admins are a little stretched thin right now.
The same people who would field any complaints about any issue in our schools. It is following the approved complaint procedure. We worked with the superintendent to make sure we were following the district's complaint procedure. So unless you have something to, to gripe about with our district's complaint procedure that we use for all other policy issues, I don't know what we're talking about.
I have nothing to gripe about a complaint procedure. I have something a lot to gripe about, about an illegal discriminatory quasi-policy from being implemented in our district. And that's what this is about.
Just so we're clear on this, I'd like to just say, Director Penner, that in my first two years in the board, as you were board chair, that uh, there were uh, all kinds of things that uh, I want the public to understand how this works. So if you're out there in the public right now, uh, for my first two years, you um, you led numerous different votes on all kinds of things, uh, knowing that you had a majority of the vote and you pushed those things through. And uh,
Hey Dave, if you want to talk about my chairmanship, you know how to get ahold of me. I think it would be
I'm fine.
And on the policy.
On these.
If you want to talk about this, Dave, we can, but it's not
I think he's just calling out your hypocrisy.
I can, I will tell you what, when I was I will get into it, it's fine. When I was on the board, if a board member wanted to have conversation, we did. If a board member wanted something on the, on the agenda, they brought it before the board. The board decided I did not ever, ever reach consensus with anybody in this role prior to a meeting, which is something the four of you clearly cannot say. And Dave, I wish you would have come to me and said, this is how I feel. Instead, you just didn't show up to committee meetings. And instead, you just sat there and pouted. You could have come to me, we could have had a conversation. And now what you're doing is you're clearly upset at my leadership and you're trying to be a bully about it. And it's destructive and it's not going to help anything.
Not true. It's just
Okay, I'm telling you how I feel about it.
One, it was, that's not true.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move forward though, so we can talk about all these personal differences.
Um, I have, I have a question. Did you read the email that Joe just sent out prior to the meeting from, from Lisa? The W E S D lawyer's opinion on this, this particular po- policy after talking with Tyler Smith and Spencer Lewis?
I did, I got that about five minutes before the meeting started.
Yeah. Could, could we ask Joe to, to um, let us, to, to let, to, to share so all the board members know what, if they didn't get a chance to read it, what, what was recommended by Lisa?
Did you receive a copy of Director Pyros?
Yes, I did.
How come everybody didn't? I was curious why.
Well, I, 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 it came right before
I sent it about a half hour before. As I said in my email, it had been stuck in my drafts, I apologize for that. Everybody would have had a copy of it. So I think one of the uh, big parts of it um, truly are about focusing on um, whatever's political, quasi-political or controversial. Um, one of the parts in there, I think the line is about um, students having two sides of things. And I think that's an important piece to um, that's a challenge for us just on how we will implement this later with an AR. So an administrative regulation for the public. A policy is passed and then we develop an administrative regulation so we know actually how to uh, manage them coming in. So uh, Director Shannon is right. If somebody has a complaint about one of these, it would go into our normal complaint procedure. Uh, and that will be all in our administrative regulations. Um, I think the, the, the difficulty um, is that we're going to have, of course, we have different um, people in different buildings, different leaders who will be taking these complaints. And I think one of the biggest challenges is, is for us to have a consistency across all the buildings about what's okay and what's not okay. Uh, those, of course, if people don't find resolution at the place they would like to at the lowest level, which it starts at the building, um, then it would come to either uh, myself or my designee uh, to determine whether or not it's political. You know, a lot of these things come in. Director Pyros, you mentioned um, the MIA POW flag. Um, there are vaccines and masks information that people find political. I don't even go on to ducks and beavers. Um, that was a joke just for a little bit, but there's, there are some religions around ducks and beavers, both doing very well. Um, but I think that one of the hardest things for us that will be uh, defining what a controversial subject is for some and not others. Uh, it'll be very, very interesting to see um, what people come up with when they decide they're going to, to make a complaint. And I think that's one of the things that I'm most concerned about is how that actually works uh, on a procedural level. Just when they have, it could have possibly different outcomes. We could see people see, say that it is um, that we're being discriminatory uh, in our selection of those. So those are just some of the concerns that I have on an operational level. Uh, and I think especially the section that actually reads um, about uh, reasonably understanding that students on more than one side of said issue. And I think that's true for just about any issue. So I think that's one of the ones that, that I do um, have some concerns about specifically in that part of the language. Um, but again, the operational part of it, us trying to determine um, what is and what is not controversial will go all the way up. I assume that they would come eventually in, in front of the board as is part of our district complaint procedure. And that's kind of where I'm on this. Yep. Go ahead, Trevor.
And just, just for clarification, so um, I know that we had one, I think it was a teacher sent in. Maybe, I don't know, she's a teacher, part of the NEA. She made some comments about controversial subjects and, and policies and agreements um, that surround that. That they, you know, if it's not part of the curriculum, that they could um, bet that through the principal to get it part of um, a, a curriculum uh, setting to be taught in an objective manner, right? So there is other avenues besides that. If we want to talk about issues that are controversial, right? To move those to an academic setting that's appropriate and, and to teach it in an objective manner where you get both sides of it, where kids can draw their own conclusions.
That's correct, and that's under the controversial topics. We do have it under board policy. But this is more about if somebody doesn't like what they see in somebody's classroom, then they will file a complaint. And then we will go have to process through the complaint. And I guess that concern that I also have is that I can see this devolving into um, people complaining about each other, whether it's staff against staff or whether it's students against um, staff. So I just, I, the, the scope, it may be that it's just too vague uh, in that part of it. And I know that um, uh, that Tyler has mentioned a few of these things before. Um, so I just, that's part of the, I like an operational concern. So the controversial topics, yeah, we have policy around that and we do set it up in a way because there are things that are hard to talk about um, with students without making them pretty crazy. We do follow procedure. Um, but again, this is going to be essentially reduced to um, you know, complaint procedure after complaint procedure. So I think that's, that's going to be one of our biggest challenges.
And if we pass this policy, this might, this is not going to get rid of our tort claim from NEA, is it?
Um, you know, I can't actually speak to whether or not that would get rid of the tort claim. I'm uh, I'm not qualified to speak to that legally, so I don't know if that would get rid of the tort claim or not. Yeah, I know Mr. Smith has a, an opinion on that.
I would, I would recommend that that be reserved for uh, when the insurance retained counsel is on call and executive session would probably be the best policy regards to any predictions.
Wait, so you wouldn't know the answer to this as our attorney?
No, that's, that's not quite what I said. I said, the best time to deal with that would be in executive session. And particularly when uh, Ms. Vickers, who was the insurance defense counsel, was hired to uh, potentially deal with any kind of that matter would be on uh, in a meeting. So that's an executive session litigation type meeting, not probably tonight. Would be my
The reason for that is not because you don't know the answer, but because we have to maintain attorney-client privilege.
Right, and I don't believe, I don't believe she's, I, I actually talked to her today and she was not going to be on this meeting. Somebody from her office might be, but she was not going to be on this meeting.
Thank you.
Hey, Director Shannon, you're back up here.
I, I would like a point of clarification. If Joe could, could um, because not all the board members had a chance to read Lisa's email, could, could he, could he um, let us know what it said?
Um, I believe that letter may also be covered by attorney-client privilege, correct, Director Morello?
That's correct.
Okay, got it, sorry.
All right. Okay, Director Shannon.
Uh, I move that we adopt policy G B G as presented.
And I would second that. All right. Well, like we've said, it's time to come to the vote on this. So if you are in favor of that policy, please raise your hand at this time. Uh, and that'll signify by saying yes. And I see Directors Brown, Shannon, uh, Powell and Dehart saying yes. Those opposing, please raise your hand by saying no. Directors uh, Pyros, Penya and Penner. Motion passes four, three. All right, I make the motion then that we uh, see if I get the language down here correctly. Make the motion that we uh, terminate the contract of Superintendent Morello and with no cause.
Chair.
Yes.
Chair Brown, there's some recommended motions um, in the packet. You should probably use language that's been um, reviewed by counsel.
And to just clarify in this, the packet that you're referring to is a packet that the board has not seen and is also not a part of the actual public packet, is that correct?
Uh, there's a packet provided in an executive session, you're correct.
But that most, that most of us did not get it until the time of the executive meeting.
Think it's that same packet, yep.
But we still have not reviewed it, just so everybody's clear.
Shannon, you have a copy of that?
I've certainly not had time to review this.
I, I got it when everyone else
Right now.
In the group did uh, during the session. Because, because of a mix-up in uh, forwarding it on to us, apparently. Not because anyone conspired to keep it from us. I also didn't get it until the same time as all the other directors.
Do you have that language to read there, Director Shannon? I can still make
But, but that gives me pause to think we need to, to have a opportunity to read the information that was sent to us and not move too quickly to judgment.
I mean, we tabled a motion on if we're going to figure out if, if a rainbow sign is political or not. And because people didn't have enough time to review the packet that they had for four or five days and the packet that we just received a couple of hours ago while we were in a meeting, uh, is certainly not sufficient time for me to review it and understand it.
Um, Tyler, where, where in the pack is the language you were suggesting he use?
Um, there is a, it's in the recommended course, possible courses of action. There's about five potential motions in there. It's on eleven, if you're looking at the pages. Under the complaint process.
Someone's going to have to read those because Rebecca can't access that. And if we want to provide access, you know, she should be able to know what we're going to be voting on.
I should have been given, given this information prior to the meeting.
Um, so page eleven of the PDF document is is chapter three, four, two, teachers and other school personnel? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about the motion to give written notice.
Could you just read, could you just give him the language, Tyler?
Yeah, Chair Brown, I believe what you're, what you're talking about was the motion to give ten days notice of termination for no cause pursuant to paragraph ten D of the employment contract.
Okay.
Is that the one that you were trying to make?
Yes. The motion is a ten-day termination written under ten dash D of an employment contract. That is my motion. Is there a second? Okay.
So Chair Brown, what, what is it, what is the motion? I'm looking at it.
It's a ten-day
No cause termination of contract notwithstanding, so section one of this agreement?
Yes.
District may discharge superintendent, superintendent and terminate this agreement without any showing of cause upon ten days written notice and the tendering of the district's certification of willingness to continue superintendent's salary and fringe benefits up to twelve months or pay the balance of superintendent's salary and fringe benefits, which
Or pay the balance of superintendent's salary and fringe benefits, whichever is less with understanding superintendent shall work for those additional months at the discretion of the board. Such notice shall terminate this agreement without recourse.
That was reading from the contract.
That was page five.
I I think this process is definitely illuminating a fact that this is not above board. We've not had time to review this. We don't even know what's happening. The people making the motions don't even know the wording and it is illustrating the need for much more time on this.
And there was no second, so the motion dies.
I was clarifying what the motion was.
You you didn't, though. You just read the contract. You didn't read the motion.
Okay, can you read the motion again, Chair Brown?
I make the motion that we terminate the contract with ten day notice of termination in a written form, which is per part of the contract, the contract for Dr. Morlock. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So everybody at home following along is clear. This will fire the superintendent. He will have ten days to leave. We will pay him for twelve months. And at some point, we'll need to find an interim superintendent in which we will also need to be paying. So we will be paying for two superintendents and the financial and legal liabilities for the district are endless.
Nikki, if I may, could we at some point between now and whenever the next time we meet or get a an estimate of what our total expense will tally up to?
Yes, I can definitely get that. Would you like that just in dollar amounts or by staff or?
Good question. I think dollar amounts for sure. And then if I have more questions, I'll forward them to you via email.
I oppose this motion. I feel that that the board has not tried hard enough to work with Joe. And his integrity has brought the district from almost crippling financial ruin to to a bond, a hundred and forty one million dollar bond issue that he has been guiding through us. And and we will lose his expertise. He we will lose his community involvement with the Rotary and with various local groups, what work he has been doing on behalf of Newburgh School District. I feel we will lose staff who has has grown and been brought here because of Joe's integrity. And and what what he's being because he didn't rush to do something that he felt was illegal. He was protecting the school district from our rashness. And that is what a what a CEO does. He sees the big, big picture. And I don't feel that that the other school board members have can see the big, big picture. And I've worked with Joe and I've worked with others, other superintendents. And I have found Joe to be open and honest and trustworthy and and willing to to work with people. And I feel that this is not financially transparent in what you have will commit this the district to. And I've gone through a superintendent search processes and and if we can't even get together with a policy committee, how are we going to get together with all of our schedules to do a superintendent's search involving the community? I I I'm baffled why you feel this is is needed to be done and why you feel it needed to be done tonight. I feel you've just jammed this through and insisted upon it. And that does not go, we do not work together that way when we feel jammed up and just and just pushed along the way. You what you talk about. What was the term you used, Dave, about? Oh, I I forgot. You said something in your board comments about how how to look at one another and I just feel that this has been on your agenda since day one that the two new board members were were voted on and that you're going to we're going to lose so much from from this action. I'm I'm just very, 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 very saddened of your unwillingness to work together and to work with what we have and strive and and be an example of bridge building.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just want to remind everybody to make sure that there's no personal attacks or anything like that discussed in public session.
Who who said that?
Tyler Smith.
Want to remind you of the of the legal obligation?
I heard. Yeah, we heard. Yeah, it's problematic for so many reasons. I have cried multiple times today. We will be losing a leader. And I'm certain this will be a four three vote. We will be losing a leader who has pulled us out of financial ruin, who has rebuilt community, who has rebuilt relationships in the matter of three months. Four people have completely destroyed that. And I I am certain that this will have rippling effects for months and years to come. And I doubt that all four of you will even be here when the rebuilding really gets to beginning and when it really starts to happen. This is going to set our district back decade. And not only that, but like I said in my opening statements, it is our children who will suffer. And it feels that that is the point. I fully expect that this will just be added to the mountain of litigation that that these four board members have currently got us into. I am concerned that we will lose insurance coverage. I'm concerned that we will have absolute inability to provide even basic services to our children because of this decision. And that has been widely discussed in executive session and everybody voting tonight knows exactly what they're voting for.
That is your opinion.
Dave, literally, every time I say something, you say it's my opinion. Some of it is opinion, but some of it is fact and it will all come out. And this has been the shadiest, shadiest process ever. And unfortunately, like I said, it will be our children who have to pay for this because they will be losing resources out of their classrooms. And those are my kids. Those are my kids' classrooms that you are taking money from. And that is not my opinion. That is a financial and actual reality fact.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Directors Brown, Dehart, Powell and Shannon, those not in favor, raise your hand. Directors Penya, Pyros and Penner. War three.
I protest that none of you had anything to say why you wanted to do this. That the public is is is
It's it's done. We've already discussed
We know exactly why Rebecca, because they're cowards and they know they're going to get sued. We know exactly why. We don't need to Dave, please adjourn this.
Are we going to move on or you want to stop now?
I I move that we just adjourn the meeting at this point. I don't think anything constructive will happen with this board again.
I'll second.
All right, if everybody's in agreement to that, if everybody would like to end the meeting right now, please raise your hand.
Can I make a comment to Dr. Morlock?
Sure.
Dr. Morlock, we know you and we trust you and this pains us terribly. And I know that that your integrity has 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 spurred us to be be faithful servers of to our children and and we wish you well. We're so sorry. And and we just and I'm very disappointed in this decision.
Thanks, Rebecca. Just remember that from the the darkest dark comes the brightest light. So everything will work out eventually. Okay. Thanks again.
You're a bigger man than I am.
All right, meeting is adjourned.